What's up everybody? As you can see, we uh swish it up a little bit for this podcast. What's up to my boy Nick? Thank you for coming through.
Absolutely.
Everybody, this is city councilman Nick Clufus um. What's zone are you?
District three.
District three. Hey, what was that one movie?
District five or district nine?
No, not district nine. What's the movie where like the games Hunger Games?
Hunger Games, yes.
They had districts and stuff?
Yeah, district three would be pretty alright. Katniss was from like district eight or something, right?
How long does, cuz the districts they like died after a long time, right?
The higher number districts did. Number three would be great for awhile.
Okay.
For sure.
Alright, so that's cool. What is that's?
What areas does that encompass?
Yeah.
So that district three is uh from Colbert Lane down to Seminole Woods.
Damn, they got it blocked off like that?
Yeah, it's so like if you think about it.
See Colbert Lane, okay?
Colbert Lane all the way on the right to like all the Grand Haven uh area and then if you go west all the way over to Old Kings and through to the P section uh and south to Seminole Woods, so it's like that big square.
Dude, he said just south to Seminole Woods.
Yeah.
That's a pretty big square.
It is.
So south to Seminole Woods all the way to US one?
Uh yeah, west uh west. Yeah, so all the way to US one in Seminole Woods.
So what does that mean? What? That's your area. What goes on in your area? What goes?
So the interesting thing is when you get elected, it's you're elected as a at the large of the voter population, so it's all Palm Coast.
Mm-hmm.
Uh district three is a lot that's going on right now with their innovation district and some of the uh newer development. It's all happening in in district three, so it's it's exciting, but there's a few things that are specific to district three that are are great. I mean Seminole Woods is awesome. That's an up and coming area. There's gonna be uh some more pocket parks going on over there. All the way over to the P section, I mean. And it extends up to the Palm Harbor Golf Course, so pretty much everything uh below that's mine, but yeah, everything's going strong in district three and I guess in Hunger Games term, we're still pretty well.
Nice. Uh let's back this up a little bit, so the last time you did a podcast.
Yeah.
When was that? When when was the election after that?
Yeah, so that election was in twenty sixteen.
Was that the Trump election?
It was. I was on the same.
Yo, that was history, bro.
It was.
That was intense.
It was insane.
Cuz hold on. Oh, you said you were on the same ballot?
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, cuz his name was up here. Your name was up here, right?
Exactly.
Bro, I think your name might have been on the back. No offense.
No, no, I think it was.
I don't know if that's offensive or not.
No, it's not, but my name was on top because I alphabetically uh the woman I ran against Pam Richardson in the uh general election. Finally, Kalufus was first alphabetically. That's like such middle of the road name uh K.
Does that play a part?
It does.
Come on, dude, don't.
Seriously, and the New York Times has said being a male and being on top of a two-person election can have up to a ten percent swing in the vote of people who have the mindset that they vote for every seat no matter what. So let me ask you this question. There's two types of people in this one.
Okay.
People who go to the voters booth and they fill out their ballots for everyone, even if they don't know who the who they are. They just pick the coolest name or whatever resonates with them. Or if you haven't done your research, you don't really know, you just leave it blank.
Mm-hmm. You answer which one am I?
You don't have to sell me, but they're.
I fill in every single one.
You just pick names? I used to do that.
No, not even just pick names. Well, uh I'm I'm kinda weird about it, okay? So this time, I remember there was like two gyms, you know what I mean?
That's too many.
Like, this might sound I don't even know if it's racist or not, but there was the one guy like Chukwe Corello, the that guy, whatever his last name is. I was like, we need a little bit of diversity, you know what I mean?
Dude, that's fair.
And then there was another one where it was between a guy and a woman and I was like, once again, I want the woman in there, you know what I mean? So it wasn't exactly just like a randomness. Some of them were, you know what I mean?
So those are the ones that the toss-up. I used to just pick one.
Yeah. Nick Clufus would definitely get picked. That's a smooth name.
Right? I hope it's unique and then the interesting thing is too uh I'm more afraid today to pick the wrong person. But when I when I guess who I wanna vote for, if I don't know who they are.
Say that again?
I'm more afraid today than I was in twenty sixteen and before I started to run for office.
You're more for today?
Uh more afraid.
Oh, more afraid?
More afraid today to pick the wrong candidate.
Oh.
Because I've seen people who have turned out to run for offices and growing up, I always assumed everyone was like a responsible person cuz they made this decision like I'm gonna run for something.
Hmm.
Not the case.
Nice.
Sometimes crazies get through and now I've seen that and I'm I always go to the voter booth knowing who I'm gonna vote for now, but man, you have to be careful who you vote for.
So I got a chance?
Yeah.
Jonathan Robinson?
Heck, yeah.
That's just, I think that's pretty smooth, you know what I mean? Like, not trying to toot my own horn or anything, but I think when people say it's a strong name, strong American name.
Got that going.
No offense to foreigners. I think Clufus is kind of a foreign name.
It is, yeah, Ukrainian.
It's funny because just like this kinda, I think this happens on like when I fill out job applications and then when I talk on the phone and then when I come in for the interview and it's like, oh, you know, like you're John Robinson, you know what I mean? Which is cool, but I'm glad it just says like Jonathan Robinson on there, you know what I mean?
Yep.
I might just, cuz a lot of people are like oh, you gotta do a lot of publicity and stuff. I was like, I I don't know. I don't know if that'll help or hurt me.
Depends.
You know, and like, we can keep it honest, you know, it's just me and you.
Sure.
It's not like anybody's gonna watch this, but I don't know, man, cuz I'm thinking about getting my hair braided in cornrows or might even get a little short dreads or whatever, but I'm gonna run like that, you know what I mean?
You have to run as yourself or you're gonna dishonor everybody who votes for you.
Exactly, and like, to be honest, I don't know how I feel about wearing a suit, you know what I mean? Kinda wanna look like this on the front of my little thing that's gonna be in the road, you know what I mean?
Absolutely.
And it's just like, I think people are like, hey, I'm voting for that guy.
Why do you think I put my, I didn't do it specifically, but why do you think uh my picture was on our campaign signs?
Right.
To show people that I was young.
Yeah.
I wanted people to see that it was different and that there was diversity involved.
I seen that and I was like, bro, I hit you up, I believe, that first time when we did the podcast cuz I saw you sponsored on social media. I was like, whoa.
Yeah.
This dude is going out of his way and not even really go, cuz we do it all the time, but I'm like, they're not doing this.
And that's the same thing I said about you. I same thing I said about you. I said, holy cow, you reached out. Are you proactive like that?
Mm-hmm.
That's what differentiates you from just the normal person.
Yep, and I was like, bro, we could do this, man. So I wanna I've had a little bit of thoughts, plus we spoke a little bit about it, but it was like right after you won. I was like, congrats, bro. That's tight as hell, you know what I mean? But you know, it's like after the president wins, he's getting a million text messages. I'm just gonna keep it short, but once again, not trying to toot my horn, but how do you feel the podcast might have played into the votes? Because that podcast got some views, you know what I mean?
Absolutely.
And I was like, I wonder, like, even people who might not have watched it, might have seen
Yeah.
the, you know what I mean?
Totally.
And I, so what was the outcome of numbers and what was projected towards what happened?
So first we'll start with the podcast. It did a couple of things for me, honestly. It's so hard to reach out to like our demographic of younger people through the traditional facilities that people in our area use to advertise for politics, like the newspaper, uh radio, uh and Facebook is pretty much the only means to reach everybody and it's such an organic thing when you start reposting. I mean, that's awesome. So everybody in our networks who reposted that did me a huge service because just even seeing the glimpse putting two together when they're having the ballot, I mean, that counts.
Definitely.
The other thing is, that was one of my first interviews that I did that really extended my talking points.
Mm-hmm.
And public speaking and being able to communicate and interface with people is something that I had to grow substantially.
That's tight.
And I mean, you helped me so much with that.
That's what's up, bro.
Absolutely.
Hey, and you helped me too because we did like some underground podcasts before that and stuff like that. But, bro, that was the first episode that I did the Facebook Live, you know what I mean? And then it just started going up from there and stuff and then we just, you know what I mean? I mean, now we're here, but we're definitely, I just wanna let people know that we're going to be trying both, like I I think, I think this is season three or season four. I wanna say this is season four of The Outside Theory, but what it's, I love it, a podcast because you could do whatever you want, you know what I mean? Like we're the directors, we're the marketers, we could do whatever we want and it's like what we're gonna do is we're gonna do these and we're also gonna do Facebook Live ones. It's like, oh, John, you gotta stick to one. No, I don't.
You do not.
I don't know. I don't have to do anything, you know what I mean? But shout out to Cyrus. He's behind the scenes, holding it down, really like hey, there there is a lot of like just stuff done. I guess big production.
This is legitimate.
Yeah.
And I was impressed with your professionalism the first time that I was on your podcast.
I appreciate it.
And you are just on an upward trajectory, so if you keep this going.
Thanks.
Yeah.
I appreciate that, man.
I'm stuck.
Um, so, okay, now the the votes.
Yep, the votes. So the uh the primary, since there were three candidates, myself and two other women, Anita Modare and Pam Richardson, uh and I was the third candidate, the way that the elections work in Florida is when there's three candidates in a primary, if no one gets fifty percent of the vote plus one plus one vote, then the top two candidates move into the general election. So in the primary, we all split votes and I came in second to Pam Richardson and only.
Oh, that's hard.
Yeah.
Keeman's.
But I had joined the race last. I actually qualified on the final day of qualification, so I.
Cinderella story.
Yes, I came from Notre and that was very uh humbling for a lot of people who just saw me take on this challenge, just like head-on. I had so many people tell me, there's no way you're going to win when I first started.
That's hard, that's tight.
I had people in the Republican Party call me and say, you really just shouldn't even waste your time.
That's funny.
Yeah, and I said, you know, I understand where you're coming from, but we're gonna win.
Quick question.
Yeah.
Are you Republican or Democrat?
I'm a registered Republican now.
Okay, and that's cool. I have Republican views.
Sure, so.
I'm I'm not a Democrat, but I'm not a Republican.
Well, let me explain that decision too because I was a registered independent before uh I had to uh join the uh or qualify for election.
I voted independent.
Yep.
In that two thousand, wait, two thousand, what was it, sixteen?
Uh yes, and there's the twenty twenty twelve and then the midterm in twenty fourteen, but uh I was inde- independent and at first, and Florida is a closed primary state, which is interesting too, so.
What does that mean?
So in Florida, you can only vote for your party's primaries, so you can only vote
I heard.
up north, you can vote for different different candidates, so if you wanted to vote in one primary or the other, you have that choice.
So what if I voted Democrat and then I vote, is my vote null and void or something like that?
Nope, you just get to vote in one primary or the other, so whichever one you have more of an interest in uh is the one that you choose. And one thing that frustrates me the most is partisan voting, like that kills me. When someone just goes down the line and whether it's Republican or Democrat, they just pick all of the Rs or all of the Ds.
That's crazy.
It is. It's frustrating to me as an elected official because I know that there's people who don't deserve those votes and I know that there's people who deserve them way more than the people on the other side of that ticket because I'm out there campaigning with these people.
Mm-hmm.
I saw candidates win who did nothing. That's an that's a crazy thing and they weren't the best candidate, just because there was eleven.
And we always wonder and we worry about that and that's kinda the thing about the podcast. I kinda like hmm, I I don't wanna do it. I feel like it's my service to the community that when it's like that time, like almost everybody comes in here and does a podcast, you know what I mean? And like just really like, and those would be Facebook Live, so the people.
As they should.
Yo, if and there's gonna be someone out there that's gonna grill them on some stuff, you know what I mean? Yeah, and that's what I like about it going both ways, so.
And you know what is most uh like appealing to can uh to me as a voter when I see candidates do those type of interviews? Is whether or not the comfort uh the comfortability level, you know, goes really south because of the questions. As long as they're being honest.
Right.
I can never hold somebody in the wrong for just being honest with me. In life, that's like the number one thing. Is just be honest with me, even if it's news I don't wanna hear, just tell me.
And that's that's what I'm going to run. I'm going to run in twenty twenty. And um, whoa, I just thought about that. You asked me before about where I live, but I'm about to move. I'm not gonna say where I'm about to move, but I'm about to move, you know what I mean?
Absolutely.
And um.
Make sure you swap to a district that's up for election in twenty twenty and do your thing.
That's what I was about to say. I'll tell you this right now. I'm about to move to district three, but I'm not running in district three, but I'm not gonna live in district three for a long time, but I am about to move to district three, but um.
Gotta get to district one, I think. Uh I think that one may be open. We'll see if anybody uh tries to qualify for that, but yeah, if you're serious about trying to make a change in your community, then
I am.
moving yourself to be in position like that is something that's completely legitimate.
Um, you know, so, okay. Now, let's go back real quick. I don't wanna lose the subject cuz I got a lot of stuff I wanna talk to you about, but so that was in the primary, you said you came in second.
Yep.
Okay, so now what happened in the final stretch?
We crushed it. So every single morning, uh so there, so my wife is amazing. She was my campaign direct uh campaign manager. She at one point was the director of marketing and creative at the company. Uh she was uh working at, she is so talented, she made all of our campaign materials and everything, so I knew once we got through the primaries, like if I don't keep my foot on the pedal one hundred percent, I owe it to her.
That's real.
It is, and like honestly, every single morning I got up, seven AM, I was standing on the corner of Palm Coast Parkway, Old Kings, waving a sign and in a suit waving and just every single morning. I had people.
From when to when?
From seven to uh eight thirty, I had to be at work by nine.
Oh, and my boy going to work after that. Hey, my boy's out there grinding.
Yeah.
Hey, I'm not gonna lie, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna do that, y'all.
If you want, if you wanna win, you gotta grind, for real. The easiest way to get votes is walking door to door.
Oh.
It's the worst, but it's the best.
My boy's out here grinding for real.
Yeah, and I, every single day after work, I would go walk until dark, knocking on doors. And people, so the majority of people said, wow, you're the only person who's come and knocked on my door and told me why you wanna run. Because I had a platform, I had a message, technology, we got fiber net, we can make a lot more money, not raise taxes, thirty-second talking points. People.
I'm going door to door.
You have to, and it's uncomfortable, but you'll get so great at it.
Am I gonna stand on the corner with the sign though?
You gotta do that.
I gotta do it? Alright, I'm gonna follow the Nick Clufus plan.
It is a prescription.
That's it, okay, okay. So I'm gonna stand on the corner.
Yeah.
Okay, and then I'm gonna go to door to door.
Yep, door to door, standing on corners.
Do you walk or do you just drive and then?
So I've done both, so.
Which one would you say is best?
So it depends. You target into, you target certain demographics of voters, so like during the Republican primary, I would only knock on Republican doors and then.
How do you know what door is Republican?
So you get the data. You get voter data. Yeah, and I'm a technology guy, I can help you out with this. So I also built a system uh youcancomplain.com. It's offline right now cuz I won the election and I felt weird about it, but it was a voter database that you could look to see whether or not you had voted. So you could say, show me the ten people nearest to me that did not vote so that I can go actively try to tell them to vote in the next election. Because I think voter turnout is so important.
It is.
It's just like honest talk. If you wanna vote to count for a vote, let everybody vote, you know? That's the only way that it really counts. The fact that we don't have a holiday on our election day, like every other country has a holiday.
And we have holidays for dumb shit too.
And if you don't.
No offense to Columbus Day, or kind of offense to him.
If you don't vote, in some countries, you get a small tax uh, you know, like levy put on you. It's kinda like not having health insurance. But if you think about it, the only way to lose your right to participate in democracy is by not voting.
Hmm.
And that's real.
The only way to lose your, say it one more time.
The only way to lose your right to vote in a democracy is by not voting. Cuz that's the only way you get it taken away from you.
That's true.
Yeah, and that's what happens. People just stop caring.
Okay, so.
You gotta get people caring again.
Gotta get peo- see, my problem is my democrat, my demographic isn't very too much like older, you know, and Palm Coast is very much an older community.
Is that my demographic?
No, true, so I guess I just gotta go around.
You just gotta wait after you knock a little longer. Takes a while to get up.
True.
But once they get up, if they, you interact with them, a lot of times they said, you know what? You knocked on my door, I'll vote for you.
Yeah.
And that was it. They said, you don't even wanna wanna hear what I'm all about? No, that's enough. You're out there walking hard.
That's, hey, that's true, man. It's like if you're out here walking, then must obviously be really out here doing something.
You want it.
Yeah.
And it's not for cash. It's ninety-six hundred dollars a year, I mean.
I was gonna ask you about that.
That's a problem. The fact that it's ninety-six hundred dollars a year.
People don't try.
They don't, and that's, it's a terrible situation because there's so much power to be on the city council. We need to get legitimate candidates in these seats and that was part of the reason I ran. I felt I was the most responsible choice to try to keep the city on its tracks, especially with our fiber net opportunities.
Mm-hmm.
But because the wage is ninety-six hundred dollars, I don't know many people my age who have the freedom, because I'm a software engineer,
Mm-hmm.
for every Tuesday to have to go to a meeting that's nine AM to maybe noon, maybe maybe longer.
Boom.
Uh or once a month, uh it's six o'clock in the evening to whatever.
See, I can't go to the nine AM on Tuesday morning cuz I work.
That's a problem, I know, and that's like.
Can I still be in city council or no?
You can't miss uh business meetings, you can't miss three in a row, so you would have to make adjustments.
Um, would my job like legally have to let me come to the meetings?
I don't think so. I don't know. I think Florida is like a rate to work state or something like that, right?
Cuz, you know, and I'm not trying to talk about my job cuz I don't know, they might, you know? But I know like say people in the military and stuff like that, like they go do their thing, but.
I was worried when I approached my.
That's a conversation for two years from now.
It is, but you would be surprised how respected that news can be. When you say I'm going to run for public office, a lot of people respect that.
Right, that's something. It's like, yo, and I'm delivering beer for you guys too, you know?
I work hard and I'm gonna make a difference.
Right.
Other people aren't willing to step up.
You know what I mean? So I'll have that conversation with them, but um so let's talk about this uh fiber wire real quick.
Oh, yeah.
Cuz I remember before we were talking about this, so now it's been about a year and a half.
Yeah, two year, over two years now.
Over two years now, wow.
And we got progress. So I was super stoked on the fiber net stuff back when we were talking, when I was a candidate and I honestly assumed that once you get elected, you can go in there and just start making change. And that's not.
Kick the door in them.
I thought I was gonna be digging fiber the next day, you know, like actually laying the fiber myself, you know, building cellphone towers. No problem, not the case. Government is like intentionally slow to try to prevent things from being passed too quickly and to try to prevent malish intent, you know? And I understand that much more so now than I did initially when I got in. Um but fiber net now, we had our feasibility report done, which was my initiative. It was a ninety thousand dollar feasibility report that we had completed that completely detailed out our existing infrastructure, our entire fifty miles of fiber that as taxpayers, we paid over ten million dollars since two thousand and six to construct and we connect all of our city buildings with it. We also sell internet access to the schools and the police department and the city, uh we pay ourselves for our own internet instead of having to pay Comcast or Bright House. Uh each year, it saves us about four hundred thousand dollars.
Hmm.
Yeah.
So, let me ask a question though.
Yep.
Like for some reason, I just feel like if all of us are on the same internet or whatever, like one, it's easier for viruses to go through. This could just be like, I'm just
I'm gonna debunk all these things, keep going.
You know what I mean? And then, okay, then that somehow the government can just like read all my everything is control, come look at my cameras through my laptop or whatever.
Alright, next one.
Too late. Um, like is it a safety hazard and stuff like that?
It's actually a improved public safety.
Okay.
So interconnectivity is critical, so think about the world and where it's heading as far as like actual civilization. Everything is starting to become more interconnected.
Mm-hmm.
You ever heard the term IOT, Internet of Things?
No, but I don't.
So IOT, the Internet of Things, is basically this mindset that there's gonna be sensors and everything is gonna be connected into the central network so that you can monitor things without having to be, you know, on site. So think about this, our sewer caps in the city of Palm Coast, I think the number is in the thousands that we have. You can put sensors inside of these sewer caps that recognize when water has covered them so that they can send a signal back over the fiber to our command center so that we can see real-time flooding data in our city and where our streets are flooded.
That's tight.
Think about how powerful it is, because now all of a sudden, we're not reactionary to someone calling, we're actually being proactive and saying the street is flooded, we need to do something. Then we can use that data to plan for our swell maintenance, because right now, our swell maintenance it's it's good because we have great people who know the system better than anybody. But you can't replace concrete data and concrete data is the best way to make decisions. So when you have definitive data that says, hey, these roads are flooding, let's look at this picture from the hole, that is, that's power and that saves money cuz it makes the government more effective. So as far as the viruses, internet's internet, it's coming through uh the tubes, but fiber, did you know that fiber optic cable is actually glass?
Fi- hold on, okay, fiber optic optic cables, the cable itself?
Yep, it's glass.
So how does electricity and information travel through it?
I love that you brought that up because electricity does not travel through fiber optic cable and that's the difference between the infrastructure that we have now provided by AT&amp;T and Bright House that it's their cable and you think it's, today it's basically copper, it's and it's amplified. So when they come to your house and they say, we're gonna sell you three hundred megabit internet, what they're really doing is selling you three hundred megabit download internet and like five megabit up internet. And they're basically playing with numbers, but what happens is when you're sending data over a copper wire, it loses its charge the farther it goes. That's just, that's just how electric works. So it needs to be amplified by a multiplexer, which is those boxes on the side of the road that you see. They're generally near street corners and things. What that does is it.
The green box?
They can be green, uh like they'll say AT&amp;T or Bright House on them depending, but basically what they do.
The ones we used to sit on at the bus stop?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
What that does is it recharges the signal that you're sending from your copper wire so that it has enough strength to make it to the next multiplexer and then the next and then the next. So that's how the systems works today, but metal stinks at trans uh transporting data because it's electrical pulses. It, the degradation rate is huge. Electric is just hard. So what fiber optic is, it's glass, you know? It sends photons of light through the glass that's caught by a network interface on the other side and analyzes the light that's coming through the fiber optic cable to uh translate that into data.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm no longer sending electric through the uh cable and this and in fiber it's glass. I'm sending little pulses of light.
Hmm.
So it can go way further and way faster because you're traveling at the speed of light and not the speed of electricity. So a fiber optic cable the size of a pencil can have the throughput of the entire world's internet. That's how much data you can send through glass.
Hold up, timeout.
Yep.
What's a throughput?
So the, if you put everybody in the entire world on the same length of this router and it was hooked up to fiber optic cable, it would be able to have enough throughput to reach everybody. There would be no uh traffic issues. Because glass is that much more powerful than the the copper because you're using light instead of electricity.
Hmm. Do any other cities use this?
Only the innovative ones.
Like?
Chattanooga, Tennessee, uh a lot of, and it's different per state because obviously AT&amp;T, Verizon do not want municipalities doing this. So we, if we did not have fiber net So we, if we did not have FiberNet in two thousand six, we would not be able to build it today. There's two, yeah, and we're only one of four cities in all of Florida that has our own municipal network, yeah, it's us, Gainesville. Ocala, and Ocala is a great story too, and then um. I I think it's uh NASA, but it's it's uh Cape Canaveral or wherever. But long story short, Ocala, it was in the same situation Palm Coast is, where these telecom companies didn't wanna build out their network. So they built their own power grid and their own fiber network, connected the entire city. Yeah, and they make a fortune, because selling data is cheap. It's it's crazy, that is the one business that the city can be in and make money.
Interesting. So my next question is. Will it make internet cheaper for us? How is this, how do we use this?
Okay, so that's the problem, is that we never had any outward marketing at first. And that was crazy, because you've got people and businesses in Palm Coast that can use this internet, because we're underserved. And that's why we as the city built it to begin with, because we didn't have any better options. Bright House wanted like a million dollars for us to pay for internet. We could just build it ourselves and save that million dollars. So the feasibility report that I was talking about earlier that was conducted, basically lays out how we're going to um. Invoke a third partner, a third party private partner to come in and pair with the city to provide those services to the businesses and residents. So right now, there's, it's it's an open agreement with anybody who wants to come in and be an ISP in Palm Coast, which nobody has actively taken up. Because we need to pursue them and say, hey, this is a fact, we have, we've done our feasibility report. There's eight hundred businesses that are literally sitting on top of the fiber optic cable, that are overpaying for their internet that, and they're being underserved. So they have crummy internet that they pay way too much for. All you have to do is go knock on their door and tell them this, and then you can charge them to use your internet, because you're going to become an ISP in Palm Coast. And here, here is our entire fiber optic infrastructure, plug this into your business model, you know that you'll be able to make money, come to Palm Coast and let's do this.
So what's going on, because I've been hearing um. There was a store that just put something in Palm Coast, I think it might have been Jimmy John's or something else. And they're like, oh, I don't wanna put another store in Palm Coast, like some people aren't trying, just because. We'd like, our, they say our government moves kinda slow and stuff like that. And there's a lot of like restrictions and different things, how you feel about that?
So we've worked really hard over the last two years to try to change that mentality.
I wanna bring people to Palm Coast.
Me too, and that's why we got rid of, uh one of the reasons, reasons we got rid of our city manager. I mean, we had to leave the old regime behind, it did a great job getting us to where we were, but sometimes when you get into ruts. You know, you know, you, people are the way that they are, so by making sure that we eliminated the problem from the top. Uh step one, number two, we overhauled our permitting department, so now everything is electronic. So permits are usually approved within one to three days. Yeah, the part that is tough and we we can't be very lenient on it are building codes. So a lot of things that we've seen and experienced are some builders that don't wanna do things up to code. And they get frustrated with our inspectors' lack of leniency. It's tough, but then a lot of the times they'll say, the inspectors in Palm Coast are terrible, they're the worst, you know? But at that point, you have really have to, but and I understand that by default, people don't really appreciate government. And I, I understand why, because it's always associated with, you know, spending your tax dollars poorly. But they're also trying to keep us safe, like these building departments are so critical to making sure that stuff doesn't get built that can just fall on everybody, so.
True.
We have done everything that we can do to try to uh ensure that our impact fees are lower than other surrounding counties. We're being as business friendly as possible, the small business center, uh something that you can go for free help, if you're an entrepreneur in Palm Coast. Uh we're trying to be as business friendly as possible, but the problem is our messaging, we need to be more aggressive by letting the people of Palm Coast know that we are being business friendly.
And I'm telling you, man, especially like Ronnie and Iman and Cyrus. But like. I think I just have like a really good team right now. And like people need to hire us to get like your social media footprint, you know what I mean? Like city of Palm Coast, I've been going on their stuff, no offense whoever's doing it, but I could tell they're not. With it, you know what I mean, they're just like, wouldn't you love to go to the beach, like y'all do the same thing all the time.
Targeting different Democrats.
All the time, you know what I mean, I'm like, come on, man, like, let's really get into it, you know what I mean?
Another thing is uh, so we have this great fiber optic network and everything, but we don't live stream our soccer fields, our tennis courts. If we wanna attract like regional tournaments. Yeah, lacrosse tournaments, don't you want to be able to say, hey, go to PalmCoastgov dot com? And click field number three and watch your kid play in this lacrosse tournament, because you live in Georgia and your grandson, you know, Jimmy is playing. But now all of a sudden, we get you on the Palm Coast website. Now all of a sudden, you know about Palm Coast. That can only be a good thing, you know what I mean? It's great publicity and it's actually a service to people in Palm Coast, cause you know there's parents out there who can't be at the field.
And I'm with you, man, like live cameras on it, that'd be tight, even on like the basketball court, really tight, you know? Then like it could even turn to like TV channel, like, you know what I mean, if we ever did any tournaments up there or anything like that.
So uh the fiber optic expansion that the city uh, it's already in our budget, we voted on it, uh one, another one of my initiatives, we've expanded.
I did vote, I saw it, I saw it on there and I voted for it. And I told my girl to vote for it too.
Perfect, uh we've extended uh the fiber optics to I think forty-three traffic cameras now. So.
We're gonna talk about that too.
Good, uh fixed license plate readers and sheriff's office.
Alright, but go on what you're saying.
So the traffic cameras, it's part of a, you know how I talked about interconnectivity before? So imagine a system for adaptive traffic lights, you need to have a bunch of data points. Basically analyzing traffic flow throughout your entire traffic grid as it's happening, and the only way to do that is by having. HD video footage and then software running on top of it, real time, to coordinate between the lights. Do the lights bother you in Palm Coast?
Hmm, no, not really.
Man, the lights kill me, when I'm sitting at a red light and there's cars going in other direction.
Oh, okay, I'll tell you, like, I like how up north, like especially like Pennsylvania. Virginia, you know what I mean, like. If, if it's like, let's say it's um, let me give you a great example. Palm Coast Parkway and Pine Lakes, you know what I mean? So it's like at nighttime, if I'm the only one there. Palm Coast Parkway should be a flashing red light, the other way should be a flashing yellow, like no, vice versa. Pine Lakes should be a flashing red light and Palm Coast Parkway should be a flashing yellow light, just let them go through, you know what I mean, like.
It should be smart enough to not even have to flash, it should just flip your lights, because it knows that you're coming.
Right, yeah, one of those.
Yep, and that's an adaptive traffic system, and that's one of my biggest initiatives for the next two years while I continue uh at least this term in office is. So now we're connected to all the traffic systems uh or to all the traffic lights, so now we can start that coordination. There's a statistic that by having a, by having an adaptive traffic lighting system, you can increase throughput on a normal road by fifteen to twenty percent. So what that means for the city's uh you know, budget and economy is that we no longer have to account for expansion. Number of lanes uh for that twenty percent, because we're gonna reap that reward immediately. So we're gonna be able to delay having to expand our road system, our road projects are cash cows. I mean, I never realized that it costs a million dollars a mile to lay pavement.
That sounds like a lot of money.
You would, I know, and I'm like, there's no way that's possible. Guess what, everybody pays a million dollars a mile, there's way more to a road system than I appreciated before I actually got elected.
Leveling all the workers out there, insurance policies.
Maintaining roads incredibly expensive.
It's, bro, we need to get those little pieces put in, you seen those solar panel pieces? It's just like, it was just like a, a fake thing, but I saw it on Facebook where like. You could see if deer are coming up on the road and stuff, cause they're like lit up on there and stuff. I just had a little fender bender with a deer situation too, and that shit pissed me off. But um. So let's talk about these like license plate readers and stuff like that and just the camera lights and. They even said in the news like a week ago, that the cops are gonna start using the cameras and stuff like that, like. What kinda like constitution of violations is going on, something's going on?
Yeah, so that's an interesting thing, so that was one of the other things that I campaigned on, was making sure that we.
Wait, pause, my bad. Is this when you said that I was worried about this and you said it's already going on?
Part of it. So, well, I didn't mean about the extent of.
You mean the webcam looking at me through the.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's going on, these traffic cameras are like the least of your worries. Plus the camera is actually already mounted to the police cars, I mean, there's a lot of data that's already collected that you're not aware about, and this scares me too. To an extent, and I can explain why, if you, if you think uh you wanna hear why, because what scares me the most about license plate readers?
I don't know if I wanna hear why, but I do.
So what scares me the most about license plate readers, and just humans in general, is that when you're looking at a set of data points. You can make your own conclusion on whatever that data point, data set means. So if a police officer is driving around town and the software on this license plate reader is picking up every license plate in every driveway. And every car as it passes back and forth, so now you're building profiles of people, a social graph is what it's called. So now I can see where Jonathan Robinson is, usually on Wednesdays at three o'clock.
That's what I said too.
But guess what, Jonathan Robinson, somebody near him who tends to be near him got arrested last week. So now I give you an integer value that might say you are a little bit more likely to be a criminal, but guess what? Now I see your car parked next to a stolen car, and now because of the approximated of that, I give you another little boost and. It's essentially a credit rating, but it becomes your crime rating.
They're doing it in China, right?
Absolutely, with the facial recognition system, China's way scarier than here, so what I fear here.
They're at least showing it that they're doing it in China, they're doing it here too, but okay, go on, go on.
In China though, is that it's the government doing all this stuff. In America, it's like the smaller entities that are collecting all this data, like. Bingo, the sheriff's offices, this, the uh traffic systems, you know? If the government wanted to orchestrate something like this, it'd be.
My thing that I said is like. Okay, let's say. And not, not that this would be a thing, but let's say the govern, or the cops wanted to track John Robinson. Uh my car is registered with the state, all they gotta do is pull it up, and then they'll just follow the little things to wherever I'm going, you know what I mean? I'm like, dude, that's whack, you know what I mean, like, but, you know, I'm gonna be honest with you. The word's already out, and it's like people could just get cars in their mom's name, or in their girl's name, or in other people's name, you know what I mean?
Committing crimes is very hard today.
What do you mean by that?
They'll get a car in their mom's name, but are they still gonna have their cellphone?
Okay, I feel you.
I mean, are they gonna log into any computer system where they're going? Those are the types of things that become. A hundred percent, wifi that you think you can trust, like Starbucks wifi, you better bet your last dollar. Every person connects to the Starbucks wifi is being tracked by Starbucks, so they can try to get more data out of you. But the FBI can also get all that data too, like if you start committing crimes, it will not take long for them to say, I wanna know where Jonathan Robinson's cellphone pinged. And maybe it was in a car registered to your mom, but now I know where you are. You can call off high speed pursuits though, with this technology, so a real time crime center also. Yeah, so if you had somebody who was flying through Palm Coast and and being dangerous to civilians or residents, you can track them with these real time crime.
That's kinda crazy, man.
It is, but it does happen.
I know, like, I mean, I'm gonna be honest, like when I was younger, I I'll go from the B section. To FPC doing like eighty the whole way down Melter. I probably should get pulled over, but you gotta catch me, don't just like have stoplights and just know I'm going eighty.
And I'll tell you this, that in the state of Florida, legislation was passed in twenty sixteen. That preempted any ability for a local municipality to write you a ticket or give you a ticket. With uh for infringing speeds, so speeding ticket, uh by automated means, so they outlawed that in Florida. And that was a concerted effort by the po- police union, because.
So what does that mean in layman's terms?
You cannot get a speeding ticket from a video camera in Florida.
Okay, hold on, so how can I get a red light camera?
That's, that's a uh moving infraction, that's not a speeding infraction. I I feel you, I I know exactly where you're going with that, but also uh those red light tickets are generally not actually ticket tickets. They're liens that are put against you, uh they're fines, they're basically uh code infractions, so you can.
They can't take away your driving rights, I've heard people say their license gets suspended.
So you can, you can get like things foreclosed on even if you don't pay those tickets. Get liens put against you and such, but I don't know how much criminal stuff you can get in trouble for, but those red light cameras are pretty much gone in Florida.
I mean, not in Orlando, in Orlando by the airport, I got one this February.
Did you roll a red, red, uh or right on red?
You know, it's been a while, it's been about a year now, so I'm gonna be honest with you guys about the situation.
Truth comes out.
I went to Vegas and I let my sister borrow my car.
This is how great stories start.
Right, yeah, but this isn't a great story.
Doesn't sound like.
But um, so, but the deal is she had to come pick me up, you know what I mean? And then like I watched the footage and the time, i- it's her coming to pick me up from the airport, she just rolled straight through that thing. But I was like, you know what, I'm just gonna pay it, like, you know? It's gonna be like, my license is gonna get suspended, I heard you could say other people are driving the car, but I don't know.
Yeah, so that's the whole thing, that's one of the reasons that they can't actually uh enforce those type of tickets, because they have to prove beyond a doubt that. You're the person responsible for the speeding infraction, whereas it's actually just goes to the registered person of the car when you have those red light tickets. So that's, that's the difference there.
That's crazy.
It is, um. Yeah, red light cameras there, I voted for those to be eliminated, that was within like the first few uh sessions of things I've actually voted on.
Um, man, see. I had my girl vote for the fiber wires, but she made me vote for dog racing to be ended. I like dog racing, but it is kinda messed up what they do.
It's inhumane, man, you know a lot of those dogs are gonna pop for cocaine.
You said cocaine?
No, this is a real thing.
Nah, I know, but it's kinda funny. No, it it it's kinda funny be. Cause they're like athletes, you know what I mean? I probably shouldn't be laughing at this.
I don't know how many of the racing dogs you watch right now.
Alright, I'm thinking of it like um, you seen Not How High, what's the other one with Dave Chappelle? Half baked, yeah, so when they're talking about nibbles and his whole life, nibbles. He grew up fighting dogs and he had to fight uh his brother, and then um. That shit is just so funny, so I think about these dogs like snoring lines of coke, cause he did it in that movie, that shit was funny.
Did he win a race afterward?
Uh he, he had to kill his brother in a dog fight, and he won.
So a lot of the times uh they'll get popped after the races and went in and stuff, that's nice.
People still get the money though.
Yeah, but a lot of times the dogs die too. Yeah, so they just like are blowing cocaine in these dogs' faces, I guess, before the race, that's a whole thing, man, it's gambling.
Blowing cocaine in the dogs' faces?
I don't know, I mean, do you think they stab them with a needle or something, I don't know? Don't you traditionally do cocaine through your nose, I don't know how it works with a dog?
I don't traditionally do cocaine, but.
I didn't know if you could mix it in water or something.
You could do that, I mean, I know a guy, but um. It it kinda reminds me of um Rick Ross, when he said put Molly on her champagne, she didn't even know it, like. You you can put cocaine in these dogs, like food on top of it and they'll eat the food.
There you go. That's brutal for animals, I mean, dogs are, it's hard to think.
If you put it in their nose, it'll probably just smell it and it'll go up their nose.
Yeah, now you got a greyhound that's literally running like forty miles an hour.
Damn, that's crazy, um not saying I would give a dog drugs, but if I did, I think the drug of choice would be like meth.
Oh man, maybe you'd have like. He'd clear the dog by like ten lengths. What kinda drug is he on?
Right, I would definitely, with meth, he's definitely one of the, like, if you're gonna give a dog a drug. Like coke is cool, and then it's kinda like, and yeah, you know what I mean, like, come on, it's really.
Take it up a notch.
Let's go here, let's go there.
Voted against dog racing, but it's really just, it's just like a ploy for gambling. So that, that was the thing, is that you can only have poker rooms where there's dog racing in Florida. So it's casinos that were trying to get rid of these poker rooms, that were trying to outlaw dog racing, because then that would invalidate the law that allowed these poker rooms to exist.
So the poker room in Daytona is still gonna go on when the dog racing stops?
Uh I don't think it will.
I think they think that it will, cause I talked to them up there.
Totally, and that's. No, that's the lawsuit right now, is that, so when you pass and an amendment like that, a constitutional amendment, and it invalidates another law. They have the constitutional right to try to make an injunction to prevent that from being actually implemented. So they can try to amend the original law to say, hey, well now that these people came in and they wanna take away our dog racing, we should still be allowed to gamble anyway.
Let me ask you a question. That stuff that you just said right there, did you learn that before getting into city council, you learned it like through it?
Through it.
That's tight.
Yeah, I had no idea how government worked prior. Bit of an idea, but now I actually understand like committees and how things.
Is it, is it okay, like, how do they expect you to have experience?
That's the thing, is that I had no idea what being a city councilman was gonna be like, and I, you know, was a little afraid, a little worried, it's like.
That's where I am right now.
Yeah, uh but if, there's no like guide to being elected official, that's what I found out, you have to, you have, it is what you get out of it. So if you're working really hard and like you're in the.
It's kinda like being an NFL player, you've just gotta be a rookie the first year and learn.
Exactly right, yeah, and if you, if you've been a leader your whole life, then that's kinda the, your warm up to. Yeah, as you should, there's, there's something very humbling about it, cause you will have to be open to any question that comes at you and you have to be able to handle it. You learn to think on your feet, there's a lot of skill.
Do I have to answer every question? Okay, cool.
Do you want votes, I mean, there's, there's a a give and take there.
Well, see, that's the thing though, like, um you know, just listening to podcasts. Just listening to like ESPN and stuff, like some of these NFL athletes are messing themselves up talking. Rather than not, you know what I mean, like, let's say, and I'm not even gonna say. Let's just go with, and I'm not ta- asking you, this, I don't even want you to imply an answer, you know what I mean?
Understood, yes.
No, I'm saying you don't wanna, but let's say like abortion or whatever. I'm pro-choice, I think the woman should be able to choose whatever this that she wants to do, you know what I mean? But sometimes you don't, it sounds like, hey, what's your views on abortion? I might wanna be like, I'd rather just not say, you know, I I'm a guy, it doesn't matter to me anyway. You know, I I'm a guy. It doesn't matter to me anyways.
Yeah, absolutely. And because you're male, it's like so hard for us to even understand like what that.
Yeah, I'd be like, I don't even think it should be on my ballot as a guy.
I feel you on that.
You know what I mean? Like.
I don't know what it's like to be a woman and thank God I never have to be put in that position to make.
I'm saying, there's gives and takes. You know what I mean?
I was asked that exact question when I was standing in front of the voting booth on election day in twenty sixteen. A guy came up to me uh and he said, what are your views on abortion? I said, I'm running for city government. My views do not matter.
That's real.
And he said, I would've voted for you.
I would've voted for you?
Yes. I said, that's fine. And it I do not even wanna give that dude an answer because. His decision for who's running his city should not be based on opinions about abortion.
And my thing just is like, you know, okay, everybody has their own opinion. He's allowed to have his opinion, but I still go back, this is just my opinion. A guy asking another guy what their views on abortion are is kinda, there's something wrong with that to me a little bit, bro. Now you're not gonna vote for me like cuz like.
You gotta let it slide off.
Your whole vote view is on abortion? And you're a guy, it's kinda wild. Now, I don't know. Hey, whatever, maybe he has a valid reason for it. I'm like, I don't know, whatever.
You gotta let that one slide off your back. You'll lose some of those, but so. I was standing next to a candidate who gave an answer that he knew that person wanted. Yes, so then that person asked me, so the guy went right down the line asking everybody. And the people who ask that type of question are the same per- it's like same type of person that will ask every person in a line. You you know that guy. So when that person went in, I looked to the person I was standing next to and he said, I had to say that. And I said, no, you didn't.
Alright, so see, that's, I'm not gonna say the person's name. But I hit up my boy and I was like, yo, I'm running in twenty twenty. He's like, yo, I'm down. I wanna give like endorsement money to you and stuff like that, you know? He's like, what are you gonna do for the black community? I was like, bro, what am I gonna do for the community? You know what I mean? Like, I love black people, black people, but I'm not gonna like look away from my Spanish people or my white people. You know what I mean? Like, I'm just helping Flagler County, you know, or Palm Coast or Section Three or whatever. We wanna call it, you know what I mean? Like, and anybody in there, it's gonna be a melting pot. But I'm not doing something for the black community. Sorry, guys, like, the black community is gonna be in there too, so I'm gonna help them out. And I'm definitely going to give people a platform, you know what I mean, in the black community. But I'm gonna give other people platno- platforms too. So that question kinda like rubbed me the wrong way. He's like, I'm not voting for you. You just lost out on my money. Said, bro, I'm not doing it for your money. I was like, that's like people, that's when rappers sell their soul. Or entertainers sell their soul to me, that's like, oh, you're paying me a million dollars? Let me rap about Coca-Cola and not Pepsi or root beer and my favorite drink is root beer, you know what I mean? Like. So I sold my soul, so now Jonathan Robinson loves Pepsi. And that's not my, that's what I believe selling your soul is, so I'm not gonna do that. I'm not gonna, I'm gonna say what my soul is. And if you believe in that and wanna run with that, then that's what we're gonna do.
I will never handcuff my work, myself to words that I don't believe in and I'll never handcuff myself to someone I don't know.
Exactly, it's the same thing, like at a job, they're like, you know, would you voucher this person? I'm like, that's kinda hard. You know what I mean? Like, even if it's like Nick Clufus, I'd be like, you know what I mean? God forbid, somebody makes a joke about your wife, you punch them in the face.
That's on you now.
I wouldn't blame you for it, but at the same time, I didn't know you were gonna do that. I thought you might go to HR or something, but that's a little bit much, but. I don't know what anyone's gonna do. He's gonna come to work and, you know what I mean?
You know what the uncomfortable thing is? Having to ask people to give you their endorsement. Because you've met these people and it's in a political environment. And now you have to ask them to put their name to you and you haven't won yet. And I experienced that a lot because people doubted me. And they were hesitant because they're business leaders in the community going against the grain. And that's a big step out of line. I did not receive one of the endorsements from the Flagler County Association of Realtors. And it was a tough one for me because there's a lot of Realtors in Palm Coast, so. I had to go to specific individuals that are very powerful in our community and the and in that industry and say. Here's why I'm running and here's why I think I can have a positive impact on home values in Palm Coast and make this a better place so that you can sell homes. And some of them were receptive and some weren't, but. Asking for that endorsement is tough. Rick Scott.
Nick, I'm sorry, but um we're gonna have to cut this episode short real quick. Um, it was a great conversation. There's definitely gonna be a part two coming out, so I appreciate you coming out there.
Yep, I look forward to seeing you on the campaign trail and I.
I appreciate all the information that you gave me and um, y'all, look out for part two coming soon.